Ashen, Michael Bow.
Here.
Art Murphy.
Here.
Juanita Lewis.
She's on.
Okay, thank you. Lou Demento.
Here.
Here, thank you. Christina Bonitakis.
Barbara Bose.
Yeah.
David Cassidy. And Fred Stone.
Here.
Thank you.
Welcome, everyone. We have one thing on the agenda tonight, which is the continuation of our master plan presentation. And I'd like to pick back up where we were with the public. If there are any comments or questions at this point, questions or comments, you can please come up, use one of the microphones, and we'd love to hear from you.
16 locals. I have a question. I was clear on that property as you come into town that is going to be happening in the show. Is that zoning saying the change, change, is that zoning changing or? What's the status for that?
Specific zoning changes are the purview of the mayor and council and then would come back here. But the waterfront development zone is mentioned in here, not specific changes to the zone. But that application, as far as I know, is is gone. But the waterfront development zone is mentioned as many of the zones in in the master plan. How would you encompass that piece of property? That is in the WD zone, yes. Okay. Um. I also, I think I forgot to mention it for last time.
And your microphone's not.
Oh, it's not working. Hello? Does that work?
Yeah.
That's better, thank you.
So I'm very impressed with your engagement efforts, by the way.
Thank you.
Any levels of it. I think, did I, when to the middle school also? So I wasn't at that meeting.
Susan shaking her head, yes.
Um. The other thing, I I I support the plan, basically. I know it's not everything. And I know it's not supposed to be, you know, a detailed plan of what is going to happen in the future. Um, I do want more, if you're going to do some sort of public park or something like that on the west side, I certainly would want a lot more input from the community about that process. And I think you said that you were going to do that. I'm a hundred percent in favor of cleaning it up and stabilizing it so that we don't lose the habit. But it was important, and they in the plan kind of go with nice illustration there. Um, but there's a lot of concern about what's going to happen there. And so I just wanted to say that. So thank you very much. I'm, I think, with my remarks, I want to say everybody. You're welcome. I have a question. I have a statement. Keep in, keep in mind, there is no plan associated with with Sunset Park in any detail. What was in the report was merely an illustration of what could be. The plan is to clean it up. From that point on, whether it's a park or what kind of park or what's there is very much up to the mayor and council. Comes here kind of at the very end of it. Our putting it in the master plan is really just saying to everybody, we'd really like this to be something someday. And the first step is to clean it up. Beyond that, you know, the, I I cannot imagine the mayor and council would do anything there without a ton of public hearing, like with the plan, as you'll remember, for Marie Park, which is years old. There are multiple public hearings and ideas and 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 things of that sort. So I don't want anyone to think we're anywhere beyond working to get it cleaned up.
I think I'd also like to add kind of like Lou or remember Lou was saying a class meeting, I wouldn't mind seeing some sort of, I don't know, like a ball of playing board in that, but you have a lot of things in there. And it's a little overwhelming, 160 pages. Uh, I think that it kind of made sense if your discussions around having priorities and maybe doable things and working for that end in some way. Um, as the, as builders of this plan, making some of those things happen for improving pedestrian safety, um, more access to our waterfront, obviously, and other environmental goals and affordable housing goals. You know, this is a living document, as you said in the last meeting, and having it sit on a shelf and escape dust equal next 20 years is not what anyone wants. But I think to have a plan of some sort in the areas that are doable would make some sense.
I thought a lot about what Lou's Lou's comment was, and the, keep in mind, this board doesn't do anything. You are watching the end of our doing as far as the master plan is concerned right now. It is a plan. It is a document. It is a reference. It's a resource for rural agencies, the mayor and council, future developers, opportunities for grants and things of that sort. It's really just an idea book. That's what they should call it, is an idea book. And my worry with prioritizing anything is because I couldn't tell you what's going to happen. Whether there's train station development or a grant opportunity for better bicycle paths or pedestrian safety or affordable housing. None of it is necessarily more important at any given time than something else because we don't know what opportunity will present itself at that time. So if there's a grant to to for safer streets, we mention that. If there's money or an opportunity for affordable housing, whether it's from a grant or from a developer that wants to do something, we mention how important it is that we get a certain percentage of affordable housing. And you go on and on, waterfront access, everything you mentioned. Nothing is more important than anything else at a given time because we don't know what the opportunity will be. So that's my hesitancy with prioritizing anything because everything in here is important. Whether we get to it or not, or the opportunity is ever there for the town to make a step in that direction, I have no idea.
I'd agree that you don't do anything. That's a funny thing. You guys do a lot, actually. And um, I would say that without a plan or without thinking about these things, I mean, I I I understand your point, and you're probably from a legal standpoint, correct? But you are advocates, you're, of course, you're all members of the community and understand these issues about planning a lot better than most of the country. And so I do think we have a role, and that's just my opinion.
We do. It's it's very often kind of towards the end of things, like, you know, when the the school wanted to make a change or something, and they wanted to build those raised beds, kind of comes here at the end of it. And we and we say we like it or not. In that case, it doesn't matter. But our role is very much helping to provide this document of ideas and and potential things that could happen down the road.
Okay. And I, you know, I guess I just want to roll back a little bit to the hotel project proposal. I think I would prefer sun zoning. I mean, I know you don't do specific zoning, but something other than something like that. If that project doesn't happen, I know they've been grandfathered in, I think it's that applies me. Something more appealing there. And I hope your document reflects that. And it's um, so just thank you again for your hard work and for doing part of that.
Thank you for coming.
We we appreciate everybody's involvement.
I missed me.
We have.
It's telling. I need to read your sign out of there. Um, I have some questions, and I apologize. I did not read the master plan. So please, um, realize the bigger. I do have a question about some of the situations that kind of get left for years and years and years. And I'm wondering what possibilities there can be when we have properties that really need to be developed and they kind of um, they kind of get left for years and decades or whatever. I'm wondering if if you have any input into the timeframe and along certain properties that get all kinds of zoning and pass them on and and on and on and on. And then we're left with these horrible looking sites. And then somebody wants to develop it and put an LED huge disruption for traffic and everything else. And I'm concerned about that. Somebody makes purchase of a property and the property turns out to be not what they had hoped and they didn't give their due diligence. I will leave. Now, we make mistakes in life and we have to pay for those. I don't think this city is ready. And the people that live here and have come in to this huge building should be impacted by something horrifying as a huge LED sign. That's just an example. It's not an attack. Um, and I'm just wondering whether there's anything in the master plan that would would have anything to do with anything like that.
To reference the billboard in particular, digital billboards aren't permitted in town. It doesn't mean someone can't make an application to come and put one in, and that's what's happening with the zoning board, and they'll deal with that. As far as what gets built or what doesn't get built, if the borough doesn't own the land, the borough doesn't build anything. What what is in the master plan is, think of it as an encouragement document for a developer. In these areas, we'd like this. In these areas, we'd like that. And we're kind of at the mercy for someone to have an idea and some money to develop a piece of property. As far as something that's been vacant and an eyesore for a long period of time, there are certainly some of those in town. And that's more of a, some of it, a code enforcement situation where we need to keep on the property owner to maintain a certain level. But an owner could own a property for 50 years and keep it vacant and do nothing with it. And providing it's met the ordinance of upkeep and things of that sort.
We do have points in signs and ordinances. And it seems to me that none of those things are being really helped. And I know that the planning board also has had plenty of input in whether parking facilities were processed and whatever. And I think that we do have a lot more power than you're giving credit.
Well, regarding an application to the board, 100%, but if if a property isn't being kept up, that's the code enforcement department. The planning board has nothing to do with that unless there's an application that was here, that perhaps the property owner is not living up to the resolution. We do have a purview there. But if something's been vacant for 50 years and they're not cutting the grass or the house is falling down, that's code enforcement.
So where is our code enforcement?
I think they're on the third floor. The third floor.
I'll keep that in.
I'm looking around. I don't see him here. So he must know you were going to come up and ask a question.
But it's always a pleasure to see you, Frank.
Good seeing you again.
Thank you, Linda.
Suzanne, this will be 25 C H P. Um. You guys, this master plan is very important. You guys do do a lot, sitting in any order, in any order. The master plan is referenced a lot, not just what was brought up about the sign. There's the reference, the the actual list master plan is stipulated, the unadopted master plan of 2023 that it read from 35 into Red Bank used to be an aesthetic, you know, approachable into this great town. So of course, everything is judgmental, right? What's aesthetic? What's pretty to me is different from you, different from the rest of you guys. But I think choosing the right word is important to give direction or a blueprint of what the town wants. Like we talked about the billboard, not even the billboard, in other meetings, the master plan was referenced in different heights and the aesthetics of different types of buildings. If a building was closer to the historical district, does X building fit into that? And they reference, the lawyers come up here and their suits and their high pink bells say, hey, the master plan says the town wants X. So it's very important that you guys look at the meat of this. And and one thing I would love to have a little discussion on is affordable housing. And one part of the master plan you were talking about, and it has happened um, is, you know, the last couple of meetings, not necessarily you, but zoning is subdivisions. But one of the ways to bring more housing to Red Bank is subdivision, to subdivide these deep blocks that we have in town. And there's one going up on Lucas. And definitely on the west side, there's a lot of subdivision going on. I think at the last meeting, um, when your committee members spoke, it was firehouse, is having the subdivision won't add to inventory, but then you go back to the quality of life. Do you want to be on top of each other? Number one. And then another thing I've noticed a lot lately is codes. That there is so little parking and neighbors are kind of juggling parking spots that people are leaving codes and garbage cans out to fight for their spots. So if we subdivide more, we'll make an area work adjusted. What's the ramifications is more cars. And then I've seen some heated discussions of people fighting for parking spots. I literally can't park on my street some days. If I leave my house at 4:30, I have to park on bridge. And I don't even have the opportunity to subdivide. So I I don't think you give your, you should give yourself more credit because this master plan is referenced in many different areas. And again, I think it's very important to use the right right words because this is you. That comes a lot. And hopefully, we'll hide right from it. It seems like we're on the right track. I mean, I know you guys have a seat more open and it's um, not detailed. You don't say, no more buildings in Red Bank can be over X stores, five doors. I know you guys don't go over to that detail. But.
Well, the the zoning ordinances too.
Correct.
So not the master plan in general, but the zoning ordinances, yes, though, all of that exists. And let me just interrupt you for a second before I forget. You've so perfectly summarized the problem with a 1.9 square mile town where you want more affordable housing, but you want great quality of life and you want a place to park your car. So when you solve all that, please tell me how the hell you did it. Because that is a big dilemma. You you absolutely perfectly characterize the challenge with all of those things you mentioned. And if I could, please retract that the planning board doesn't do anything. If I could just take that back, if you love me, God, please. I'm so sorry I said that. It's not exactly what I meant. But thank you. You perfect, I just wanted to tell you, perfectly summarized the challenge with of a lot of what goes on, which, you know, in in the plan is the suggestion that the council changes zoning to perhaps allow secondary structures in some zones, meaning you could perhaps put an apartment above your garage to add to housing inventory without necessarily impacting density too much. But if you do that all over the place, where all those people can park. So it's a mix of all of those things to try and get more housing that's affordable while maintaining quality of life and having a place to park a car. Those are all very important things.
And how do I get them going all 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 these meetings every year? So I think this is a good start and you have to realize this is just a layout. And then to your point, it's when you get off the ladder. Enforcement, of course, is a big thing I speak about, go without a line, but you know, for what it is and all the feedback and and the meeting wasn't for adults. The meeting at the law school for the children.
Yeah.
That's why school board, there was not a problem with that. Um, so again, I I like it. It's just, I think people don't realize because they think it's a plan, they think it's like an instructional, but it's not. It's just a prelude to everybody doing their work in the council and enforcement zoning. So you're right. There is no answer for this town. Everybody, somebody wants and needs. But I I I think it's a big first step, and I think it's a good going. But to your point, you do do a lot. They represent a lot of needs.
Never again. Um, thank you, Suzanne. Um, 100% true.
It's going to double our pay now.
Yeah, they're going to pay us twice as much now for certain money.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Officer Kermit, Executive Director, Red Bank River Center, Warre 46, over to Plaza. And I just want to also commend all of you on this great master plan, really, is, I I went through this myself a couple of years ago up in South Orange, where where you folks are, so I know what you what you've been going through to this document together. Donna and Susan and her team, really, very much commended on your excellent document. Um, I am not here to talk about billboards. I'll stand up for the other board. But I do want to talk about parking downtown. And I wanted to raise something with you um, in terms of the language in the plan, especially with regards to getting downtown. Um, you have a bullet point here or bolded a headline that says, ensuring adequate public parking supply by improving the efficiency of existing resources and leveraging opportunities for new parking as needed. Um, and then there's another one, a symbol that words says, destruct additional public structure parking only as confirmed to be needed. So um, I wanted to raise the possibility with all of you of of eventually adding a sentence or some language in the in the plan before you adopted that would what the, what our executive board would love to have is to have parking downtown being an inherent, an important inventory as it is now, being inherently beneficial use. I do understand that that's a legal term that comes out of court decisions in New Jersey. And, you know, that that has certain ramifications. So that would be the first request, if that's not possible, to somehow firm up the language about ensuring that there is sufficient parking downtown to keep our downtown thriving. Um, there is, um, I I, you know, I read through the part of the study that was done the River Center and Borough, I guess it was a joint parking study back in 2018. And um, that was written before the Vogel came came online uh, that that came after. And what it said was that um, uh, if you if you were going to fully lease a second story office spaces and had sold out shows at the existing base theater, the students opened Vogel Theater and Amity Theater under that scenario, they projected a deficit of 220 spaces on a weekday. Then they went on to talk about possible shared parking arrangements with private developers in a public partnership. And then they said, failing that, if that did not work, um, if if agreements to use private lots are not viable, garage will be needed to support the borough's projected growth scenario. So I understand that certain slots are not necessarily the highest and best use, um, in, you know, in terms of land use here, here in in a town like I understand that. Uh, and obviously, we would love to see, and I know a lot of these are logging for some sort of garage, whether it's privately or publicly or some combination. We don't really care. But anyway, we're just looking to kind of firm up that language somehow in the, and if that's at all possible, if that's if that's available.
I'd be happy to hear what anyone from the board has to say, but I'll make a couple of comments. Yeah, the inherently beneficial official use, not possible. So let's move on to the rest of your comments. Because there's no way we're going to make parking spaces an inherently beneficial use because it is a legal term that puts a tremendous onus on the board to grant variances for things that are inherently beneficial uses. So speaking for me, and after talking to our attorney, there's no chance we're going to do that. But let me say a couple of things. For the first time in my entire history here, someone associated with a downtown district actually thinks that they would love to have an application with more cars than they need, when for the last 30 years, not once ever did we ever have an application that required 20 parking space? And they said, yeah, but I really want to build 30. They paid tens of thousands of dollars to experts to come in and tell us they only need 10. So I I I love your optimism that you think anyone is going to come in here and want more parking spaces than they're required. But if they do, I'm a fan. It took me 20 minutes to pick up Chinese food the other night because it was not a car, a parking lot spot to be found anywhere near English Plaza. So I love it if it could happen at the expense of a surface lots, you're right. I mean, it's it is not the highest and best use of any piece of land to build parking on the ground. Um, so inherently beneficial use, no. You have somebody who wants to put more parking than they require, they should come in and and pitch that. And they should dig a hole underneath their site to put all the parking and get underground, which many of the applications this board has approved over the years have done. They've provided the parking that they needed, which we are all for. Lastly, as far as a garage is concerned, the best part about being on this board is that we don't have anything to do with that until the mayor and council does it. So I'm not even going to comment about a garage and whether we need one or not, and who's going to pay for it. Because you could talk to the mayor and council about that. So I hope that was helpful. And I'd love to hear what anyone else up here has to say about Mr. Zuckerman's comments, because I agree with you that there are times of day that we need more parking. And despite all of that and what everyone thinks, all of the work to the Count Basie Theater was approved without adding a single parking spot. And I'll bet you, I wasn't at the zoning board meeting, I bet there was a line of experts that sat there and said, we don't need any more parking for all of the work we're going to do at the Vogel. And we don't need any more spaces. I'm sure there was a line of people to testify to that fact. And I'm at home saying we need more parking. But.
I'm done. Very nice. Anybody else?
I mean, does anyone else have any comments from Mr. Butterman? Very well. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Even more. Mr. Chair, I, uh, sent out some material early today through this bank. This would, thank you. That was really good.
I didn't receive it this afternoon. Did I read all of your attachments today? No, there was certainly not enough time in my afternoon to do that. I did look at a couple of them.
Mr. Boku, William Boku.
Um, good to see you again. Been a long time. Um, so you're welcome to explain and comment and ask questions, but there's, we did not review everything that you sent this afternoon.
Mr. Boku, will you please walk and speak to the, into the microphone?
Just bring it a little closer.
A little closer to your face. Thank you.
Yeah, I did that just to get background material. So anything that I say here that, uh, is questionable or is not understood, you know, there's reference material. So I, uh, presenting officially as the newly elected president of the Greater Red Bank Area and our jurisdiction is kind of wide from Atlantic Islands, Ronson, Frey, Little Silver, Postman, Little Town, uh, Ten Falls. So, um, my presentation here today is one of asking for synergy. Synergy, because the material that I sent to you was also sent to the mayor and council on January 25. And to summarize it, from the end of receipt, each one of you, the master plan in this present, on, say, Logan, is on. The the vision is very well expressed. It says, our vision is that Red Bank continues to evolve as a diverse, inclusive vibrant place for people of all ages and walks of life, home as well as visit, embracing creativity and innovation while treasuring the elements that make it such a special and attractive community. But here's the twist. There is an existential problem concerning people of color. And we have an opportunity through what's called the Mount Laurel doctrine. It's a matter of law. Uh, Red Bank is required to produce affordable housing. And Mount Laurel came into place as a result of Southern Burlington County N W C P. Soon, the township of, uh, Mount Laurel. And the plaintiffs basically claim that his law was said that some kind of a situation where people of color, they serving all the time. Okay, so that's the 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 legislation in the constitution that is guiding all municipalities, you know, so you do a search of the master plan for N A A C P, and there's not even one instance of difficulty then. And, um, there's a lot of mention of about a settlement, settlement. And settlements can be fought. You're right in point is that whatever is happening that's causing people of color not to be able to live in Red Bank is to be addressed. The master plan, according to the constitution, you have to have an affirmative effort. A real affirmative effort, speaking to the attorney. Now, affirmative effort to correct the problem, got to stop the bleeding. Also, if you look at the material that I I sent you and you digest it, you will find, for instance, the demographic is well understood that Red Bank saw a demographic shift. You will find, for instance, the demographic is well understood that Red Bank saw a demographic shift in its resident population. With a twenty four percent decrease in this black population and a four hundred and eighty percent. The Latino population from twenty ten to twenty nineteen. The question is, are we going to do anything to stop the bleeding? Are we going? And if we go further to say that uh. And that the process, according to the draft master plan, the board has not received any applications for its first time home buyers. Woman. That's very disturbing. And I I I'm not putting on a view to be doing that, but I'm looking for synergy. And conversation about how that problem is going to be addressed. So that's basically the gist of uh. Message that I bring to uh. The panel. And you look around, for instance, here. And I you can count the number of black folks that are here. You gotta do a little better, bring in people of color also to be part of the conversation and. I like to tell the story that, you know, this guy that lost the gold watch. And uh, everybody that came around was passing by, he asked, could you help me find my gold watch? And they searched and searched and searched and they couldn't find it until one of the kids came and said. But how do you know whether you've lost the gold watch here? And he says, well, I was coming around the corner and I heard something drop. Okay, and uh, I think that could have happened. And he was asked, so why are you searching for the gold watch here? He says, because there's a lot of light. You know, so. If we can't find uh home buyers, first time home buyers and uh. There's a decrease in the black population and all that stuff. And we're coming up with all kinds of schemes in the master plan, but we're not addressing that one issue, that issue is come forth. But that's the message that I have for you if you have a question to me.
I very much appreciate you coming. Um. The demographics mentioned in the report are true. You're right. There's definitely been a change. And the planning board in the town very much support affordable housing and beyond the fact that we're bound legally. As you mentioned, through the Mount Laurel rulings. That and and we mentioned in in the master plan that how affordable affordable housing is and any. Development that comes before this board that has a requirement based on the Mount Laurel case law will absolutely be adhered to. And, you know, beyond that. I'm not sure what else the planning board can do to bridge the gap and turn the tide, as you mentioned. Beyond making sure that affordable housing is continued to be important in town and and. And housing affordability as well. Not just affordable housing that might be classified by a Mount Laurel decision, as my daughter reminds me on a regular basis. She's in her mid twenties and she says, how am I gonna be able to live here in Red Bank? How am I gonna be able to afford to buy a house? Getting married this year. It's like, I don't know if we can afford to buy a house in Red Bank. And so housing affordability overall is important. That is a large systemic issue, specifically in this area as well as pretty much everywhere. That I'm not quite so sure how the planning board, other than encouraging. That kind of development in a way that we's beyond, I would like to think, satisfy our our legislative requirements.
One issue still, you know, and I I must commend uh. You guys for for this was that uh census tract eighty thirty four. Appears to be uh commanding for folks that want to pick up. A scarce resource of affordable housing and turn them into these luxury units. That eventually end up forcing all of the assessments to go up. Now. Right on Bank Street, for instance, we have two affordable units that are deep restricted. And not sell, as I said about. And we have this ADP program, the Assessment Development Program, that automatically increases. Every assessments every. Not understanding the fact that the property cannot sell, but understanding value. So. Uh, here W C P has encouraged a whole a whole bunch of homeowners. You know, to appeal those assessments and one of them was summer really. Reduced without even being given expertise, without even giving the the town the opportunity to uh to defend. So uh. Eight zero three four census tract eight zero three. That's to if you do a search of eight zero three four in the master plan. It occurs just once, one page. I think that we need to put in some measures. Now that kind of part, the test that eight zero three four census tract a little bit better. Now whilst we're still trying to meet the uh the goals for affordability. So that's that basically concludes my presentation.
Thank you. And Susan Favadi for B F I R R R. Yeah, I keep getting that. What is B F I? I gotta look that up. Why is that in my head?
Waste Management Company.
Okay, I'm gonna think it. I thought I had it right this time. Um, go ahead, Susan.
Oh, I mean, Mr. Chairman, you hit a lot of it on. Head, but I'll just add a couple of things. The um, the defined black population of Red Bank is not unique to Red Bank. And it is something that we're seeing really rapidly. I would say the towns that are not seeing that are almost annihilated. There's lots of reasons for that and there's a lot more study that needs to be done on that, but it's almost a reversal of the migration that's sort of happening now. I think housing affordability is a big piece of that. So it's clearly a larger issue than just Red Bank and even just on the county. Um, but when you see demographics stats like that in the master, and that's exactly why affordable housing was such a strong theme of the. We talked about gentrification. We talked about a lot of different strategies to address both your obligation, as you mentioned. A lot of nation, but also lots of different ways to try to make housing affordable to more people. So if there's no one answer, and I think the the question's about tax assessment, that's very interesting. Um, and you probably bear into it's beyond the power of this board to do. I mean, the mayor and council really would have that. Just to say that there were a lot of things in the master plan that really are trying to get at that issue of affordability and are not meant to be. It's all inclusive and it's not meant to be the only thing. The plan is written in such a way that it says things like, look at incentives for homeownerships such as. So it's not meant to be all the answers for to provide something strong. And if things come down the pipe later, they might. Actually be very effective at making things more affordable. I think the master plan would support that as well.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the public?
I think.
Mr. Chairman, I I'd just like to speak to Mr. Poku's statement and this Favali's statement. And that a- as part of the master plan, there was a reference to um reducing our. Need. And part of that was to refurbish the ninety units at the Housing Authority. But that doesn't expand housing, that only fixes up what we already have. But doesn't really help Red Bank, the borough, in providing more affordable housing. So I think that's a little bit of a red herring in the master plan. The second thing I'd like to address is Mr. Poku's statement that there have been no applications. For the uh first time home buyer program. And this is a a problem that I have spoken with uh Ms. Ebanks about in the past. Um, and and my personal opinion is housing prices in Red Bank. Have appreciated so much that if you are at an income level where you would be able to get the first time home buyer. You can't afford the house. So it it it's a a settlement as part of our fair share that really has no teeth. And that needs to be readdressed. And I think that's our responsibility at the council level to look at that. To see what we can do. Maybe it's not a first time home buyer. Maybe. It's to get somebody into an affordable rental unit at Red Bank. Uh, to change that part of the settlement. So I appreciate you bringing that up. That jumped out at me as well. And uh, yeah, I I I don't wanna make this a a discussion strictly about affordable housing, but it will come up at our next council meeting.
Thank you.
I'm just, um, it's it's excellent by House about refurbishing the sample allows them to not increase your the number. However, that is also something that you're obligated to do, but you have to make sure that you're you're keeping your units up up to. Date up to condition. So that's sort of one piece of your requirement, the numbers, the piece. And I'll also just say that uh in twenty twenty five, you're gonna have to have a new housing plan as well all communities. So. Um, that would get into a lot more detail than this plan does. This plan really tries to plant the seeds for that. Um, and to give lots of different options and strategies. Your affordable housing plan will have a new number, new obligation, all those calculations will be done. Um, that is an excellent opportunity. We have addressed it already to look at things like the first time buyer program. And many, many other tools. So it's not the last conversation for sure.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Linda Hill, sixty four McLaren Street. And uh, I want to thank you for the opportunity. And I want to join in my appreciation for the work that's been put into this. It's it's uh. Critical for our town. Um, I I I have a master plan. And um, this section where you have recommendations and in those recommendations, this timeframe, cost, et cetera. Is fabulous. I mean, it really is a roadmap for how we all can get it done. I worry though, because there are so many items there. It's a long list. Um, as part of the final plan. Do or it by some other mechanism, do you intend to um. Prioritize or highlight anything, or is it a? Here here is all of it.
You missed my little speech earlier.
Can we play that? Yeah, we just can't do that. I'm sorry. The problem is, I think we keep on losing the concept of what this is all about. There's not a matter that we're, this is a laundry list for what has to be done in town. It's completely different. It's a laid out plan of what could happen in various areas of the town. And if somebody in the area that would be on your list, the hundredth most important thing comes before us. We deal with it because it's within or not within the master plan. There's no way of putting a priority and saying parking is the number one thing, or take these a number one thing, or. We can't do it. That's not the purpose and 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 it's against what we're actually doing with the master plan.
I appreciate that you certainly could say this is. How do we as a town, and obviously some of those items are for council, some of them are for administration, for other. People to bear the responsibility for. But how can we as a town approach? That very long list of recommendations. That's what I think is.
Think of it as when the opportunity for one of those things arises. We've got an idea of how we'd like it to go. Affordable housing. Someone comes in with an application to develop a site. Beyond the the our legislative requirements of how many units per acre that development needs. We've got wording in the in this document to talk about things like we'd like, you know, more setbacks or more units per acre or floor area ratio, things of that sort. Between the zoning and the master plan of what we'd like to see. But if someone doesn't come in with an application. To do something, it is just an idea and a list, which is why one thing isn't necessarily more important than another. If a grant becomes available. To put bike lanes in somewhere. Well, we we've referenced how important that is to the town. And that allows us to then waive this and say, hey, five years ago, we said. This is important, and that's why we can get it done now, because someone came in with an application or there was some money that became available. To be able to do something. Or we we get some more money to clean up Sunset Park. And we get further down the road. We're able to say, our master plan says we want to put a park there to the state of New Jersey, loosen up some money. The mayor and council does not have a bucket of gold to do everything on the map. How amazing would that be? If they could just say, let's do all this. We, it's it's very much kind of a. A guidebook about if down the road. We get an opportunity to do this. A couple of developers in the state of New Jersey come in and say, you know what, let's talk about redoing the gateway by the Cooper Bridge. We've now kind of said, that's important to us and it's in our master plan and this is kind of how we'd like to see it. And that gives us some teeth. To deal with that when the time comes. But there will be things. Sean gave me a copy of the nineteen thirty one master plan tonight. I I'm gonna be up all night reading that. I'm so excited. There's things all been in there like brought to the river. And I think it was in the mid thirties that that was first mentioned, that has never happened. Because the opportunity for it has never happened. And no one's, there it is. No one's a fan of eminent domain, but no one wants the town. To tear all those buildings down to make that happen, not to mention who's gonna pay for it. So until something becomes an an option for discussion. There really isn't a lot of action that can happen until that opportunity presents itself. And that's why there isn't a priority. Because it's all important. If it wasn't important, we wouldn't have put it in there. But it may never be gotten to.
Oh, I I can certainly see that. It's a long, long list.
On purpose. So we we cover ourselves when item number fifty two comes up. And someone says, I want to develop this site and do that. We could say, well, in the master plan, it says this is kind of what we'd like to see. So if you're not gonna do this, you're gonna have a really hard time. But if item fifty two never comes up. It never comes up unless the mayor and council line up a goal.
I think you're, I think you've got a very strange view of what master plan is. Um, it doesn't have to be that we get a grant and that's the only time we look at it. Never. When the town takes an action, when the town decides to put in a parking lot. Like the White Street parking lot. If we had a priority. That we want to have some open space, that we want to have some tree canopy. They won't, they wouldn't have done that.
And that's the op- that's the opportunity I'm talking about, is if there's an opportunity, meaning. The town took an action, a developer took an action. That's where this is an opportunity to go back to and say, this is what we'd like.
Yeah, but the the town, the town, it it's it's just like this. Well, you gotta, you gotta prioritize things. Like, are you gonna have? Are you going to um eliminate everything in in White Street parking lot and just put parking spaces? So it looks like it is. What about East Side now? What are they gonna do there? If you, i- if if it's, if you don't give that impression, it's not only parking, it's like. On streets, you know, the the lowering of the speed limit. The um, putting in like some of the recommendations that they made uh for Riverside app. For the um, uh, shortening of crosswalks, maybe putting in um landscaping in the middle. Um, and uh, more possibly even alike. But if we, if we don't specify these as cer- certain things we want, it's never gonna happen.
But there are the things you just mentioned about Riverside are in the plan. So there's an opportunity if that presents itself, or the mayor and council decides in conjunction with the state to do that, it's in the master plan. We want bump outs, we want pedestrians, we'd love it. How many times have we said we'd love a traffic light? At Bodman Place, and the state has said, no, no, no. But it's in the master plan if the opportunity presents itself. And that could mean the mayor and council deciding to take action to do.
There's there's trade offs in in terms of slowdown traffic. Well, maybe we want to get it through really fast. So we're, you have, you almost have to. To prioritize one over the other. Maybe we want every bargain like Mr. Zuckerman gave, and he seemed to imply. That we want to just pave over downtown and have parking spaces. Well, I think, I think that's been the priority. For ever since I've been here. And and I think it's a wrong priority. The 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 town. Doesn't look as good as it could have. And it's it's not a a a um, a big change. But just to, just to take these things into consideration. It's not, it's not even developers so much. They've been more cooperative than the town itself. An east side park. On East Side Park. They put in a bathroom. They wanted to put a bathroom. They were gonna chop down half the trees that the shade tree committee planted. And and the neighbors rebelled and said, no, they they were good enough to go to the neighbors and say, but how would you even propose such a thing? But there's plenty of room for these.
That's not a, that's not part of the master plan. That's not the master plan's fault. Did that happen? And each opportunity, each application, each thing or event. There is opportunity for the public and professionals and people to come and comment and say, I like this, I don't like this, I hate this, I love that. This, those discussions happen constantly at every turn and I have any opportunity that happens.
And you just, I I hate to keep on jumping in, but I said this at the last meeting. This is not a shopping list. This is not something where we apply priority, which is the wrong word as to what should be done. This is a plan of the entire town. I wish to accomplish is either through developers, there's condemnation, there's many ways that things can be accomplished. But there's nothing a priority about this or that. Again, I am also looking through the nineteen thirty one master plan. It's fabulous and it's right. And there wouldn't be a single grade crossing in Red Bank if they'd listened to them. But they didn't have the money and never happened. And it's one of the worst things in town are the great crossings, fifty one trains a year go through the town like that. So this, you have to understand that we can't, what the master plan is or what it isn't. It isn't what we would like to have on one person here. We'd like this taken care of and that problem taken care of. That's not what this is about. I I think you're referring to that. Thirty one, nineteen thirty one masked plan is a little kind of ridiculous. They proposed something a hundred years ago and it didn't happen. So therefore, what? I don't know what you're saying.
I'm not saying it. I'm just saying that this what they thought would be the right thing for the town to happen. It never happened. They never had.
Well, not everything happens that you want, but it doesn't mean you don't.
Spends a year talking about the things that are supposed to be in here, that are important to the residents and important to the employees. And and the elected officials in town and that's, this is a year's worth of work of kind of what we'd like to see. But if the town wants to tear something down and make a parking lot and cut all the trees down. Everybody needs to show up and say they don't like that. Because putting it in the master plan isn't gonna stop someone from doing that. The master plan isn't gonna say, it it says we want safer streets. How that's accomplished is a detail item that needs to happen at the time. When there's a decision either by the mayor and council to make a change somewhere. Or there's a developer that wants to build something, or there's some money available for the.
Doesn't it provide an incentive for people to do that?
Yes.
Center. It's not an incentive.
It's not a financial incentive. It's not a financial incentive. It's an incentive to be able to say, your master plan says you want safer streets.
I didn't say it's a financial incentive.
Right.
Look, we've been spending money hundreds of thousands here, hundreds of thousands there. And we got some money that we could make safer streets. We don't.
But the master plan says, the master plan says that we should, that makes it a priority. As far as this board is concerned.
But it makes it a priority with about a hundred other priorities. And when you have that money, you don't know what. Nothing will happen.
I feel like we're in a circular argument.
One, one area of master plan is important. Grants, you touched on that, but that would be something that staff would probably take. You know, so for example, your government department might go after a grant for state streets. The fact that it's in the master plan is something that the state is gonna be looking for in terms of whether they decide whether or not to grant or that money. So it being in the plan is sufficient to give you a leg up on that grant. I don't have to say that this is part of number one. It's in the plan.
Let me just add one thing. I think maybe this would help, maybe it's gonna make people more confused. An expert plan is part of the land use sector, municipal land use sector. It's a method through the use of zoning. It's not a method of changing things or telling your town what should, who has to be done first and then this second. And this discussion about having a priority doesn't fit what the master plan is. The master plan is to be a guide so that when zoning position or considerations are. And that's why it covers the whole town. There's no priority. And if somebody comes in and they want to change the zoning, for instance, the zoning at the entrance at Cooper Bridge. If the town. Pose ahead and don't forget, this is a democracy. I don't people that make laws are people that you vote for. We're not voted. So nobody voted for us. They come up with an ordinance and that ordinance is by law referred to this board. That board then determines whether or not it is quote within the purview of the master plan. So if they come up with an ordinance that's totally different from what the master plan says. We say to them, it's not within the purview of the master plan. What does that mean? It means that they can't pass it by a simple majority. Now, they need a super majority of the council to pass that ordinance. But again, this is all about zoning and it's all within the zoning. Powers of the town has nothing to do with, should we be doing this first or doing that first? These are just ideas that we're trying to get to. So it really would have been nice if somebody came along with some type of project and it would have resulted in Broad Street to the river. Doesn't mean that it was not a priority or was a priority had nothing to do with it. That's the problem.
But if someone did come in with an application that this plan supports. It gives us an opportunity to say that. Whereas if they come in with something that is the complete opposite of what we've talked about, we can smack them in the face with the master plan and say, no, and this is why. But whether it is in here or if it's prioritized or not is irrelevant to the state of New Jersey. And in court, if someone sues us over a a decision that we make, it doesn't matter if it was prioritized. All that matters is whether it was or wasn't in the plan.
I just say it's, thank you.
It isn't an easy concept to.
I'm a big.
It is, it is not an easy concept, simple one. And I understand people are here because they want to see things progress. That's what they want to see. And unfortunately, this is not the steam engine for for those things.
Yes, and so when I see hearing here that, you know, the master plan from nineteen thirty one was brilliant. And so much of it didn't happen, then it makes it sound very passive and.
Why do you say it didn't happen? There were certain things that didn't happen and certain things that did happen.
Yeah, I haven't read it yet. I just got it twenty minutes ago.
I I guess I have never seen it.
No, I guess it's a fascinating historical document because it was their vision in nineteen thirty one of what should happen in town. And one of the things which was probably very dangerous and accidents was the Great Crossings. So they're saying it would be nice. They even have diagrams on how they're doing. Ever happened with you. That didn't mean that there was a hundred other things in the in the document that weren't done.
And Linda, you're right. Some things may never happen. And I'll use, I'll go back to Sunset Park. We're probably gonna be able to get enough money to clean that up. I think there's a lot of state money out there. We've, we've made a lot of headway there. Will we ever have an opportunity to build a park? I don't know. Even if it's cleaned up, capped, we get some kind of a bulkhead to keep anything from leaching in the river and we clean it up and just lock it down. It'll be up to the town, meaning the the elected officials and the residents to decide whether or not. We want to spend, I don't know, five or ten million dollars to build a park there. Is that what we want to do? If we can't get grants or raise the money or and we really have to pay for it ourselves. It's up to everyone to decide if that's the road we go down. So it may never get done. The Cooper Bridge and redoing that whole entrance to town may never happen. Because there may never be an opportunity to do it. So it may, there's things in here that could be here in twenty five or fifty years. It just don't get done because the opportunity didn't present itself or the money wasn't there.
Yeah, I mean, I won't be around in twenty eighty one. You may, but I, I guess I was hoping that there was some mechanism whereby. This wasn't just like a passive. And I'm, I'm sorry, I know you say it's not a laundry list, but it is a very long list of things that I think. Most people would find good to do prior and and would feel that it is a priority.
And that's why they're in there. Everything is in there is things that ideally we'd like to see someday. Because if it happens, it needs to have already been there. So if someone in five years comes in and wants to do something somewhere. And we have an idea of what we'd like that to look like, it needs to have already been here in this hundred and eighty seven pages, which is why it's such a long book.
Also, Dan, I just want to add that you're talking about a mechanism to ensure that a lot of the goals and recommendations are being done. BFJ was brilliant enough to include an implementation and action plan. And in that chart, it's broken down by each topic, land use, economic development. And it talks about what type of the the theme or the category that it falls in and the responsible parties. And if it's a cost and the timeframe. So I think if people are interested in making something a priority, they could say, well, let's handle all of the short term. You know, recommendations that are given. Or, you know, the ongoing ones. So it it, everyone can, I guess, do everything according to what they feel like is important as everyone's saying here. And it could be based on the timeframes it's given. If everyone wants something done fast to show the public that it's being done, you do the short term, you know, items. If it's something that you want like progress, you do the ongoing mid, the midterm, everything. So I think the implementation and action component of this plan is something that the public. And mayor and council can focus on, on actually achieving a lot of the goals and recommendations. That have been provided by the consultant.
I'll just add, you never want to run off to the gun. So our hope is that many of these will get done with the table, should someone express us. You know, and then the staff and department heads could flip it open and sort of see their areas of responsibility. Oh, I was thinking of these two grand in the center section. Now I have language in the master plan to make that brand stronger, I mean, after this year. Or, you know, the the town's considering a higher budget item, it's in the plan. Maybe that goes in year three instead of year. But just something to give me to all the decision makers. I think from the planning board's perspective, it is a little bit more reactive in the way patients are waiting to sort of something for you. But I think from the staff perspective, it could be a little bit more active. And hope, our hope is that it is, it's been a lot of these. Some of the really tough ones like the Great Crossing, I mean, there's a reason why that. Low hanging fruit is a good place to start. Not a bad place.
Thank you.
I have a little question of some, some people have different understandings of what you mean. By short term, medium term. The short term mean high priority or the short term mean it can be done in a short time?
It's, it's timing. It could be, it could be both, but the short term is generally, you know, one, three years. Or maybe something that's already happening, it may be just a team to support program, for example. Midterm, I think we said.
Four to seven years.
Four to seven and long term is beyond that. Something could be long term and also really important. Town and to the residents.
Was the Great Crossing in the nineteen thirty one thing has been long term?
And also a lot of the, it's what's popular now. So like sustainability is a topic that is big and the master plan covers that. I guess, you know, long transit oriented development was big in the nineteen thirty. So these documents, all of these plans go on a hot planning topic. That is hot in that year, that that's more important, that the state is pushing, that the nation is pushing. These themes and these, these things that run through these master plans, that's pretty much with, it's the, I call it the hot topics. The 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 hot planning words, you know, sustainability, resiliency, global warming, things like that. So every year, every ten years is gonna change. Every twenty years is gonna change based on what's going on globally or nationally or locally. And then also in the next, what is it, seven, five years, five to seven years? We have to do a reexamination report to see how far, if we met some of the goals. And the recommendations that are stated in this new master plan. So we always have to do checks and balances to make sure that the ideas are actually being brought forth. And it's not just a document that sat, that's sitting on on a shelf.
I I see there's a lot of ongoing things, which means the town continuously has to be doing this. It has to be cognizant of what's going on and continuously. And there, there's about the same number of ongoing as there are short term.
Which is a good thing because it means doing things for all my bases all the time. Implementing policies that are already implemented. It's a new supportive program as. Advance your master plan goes that way. It's really trying to identify a lot of types of tools. It did nothing but give you, you know, fifty million dollar projects. So none of that would ever be happening. Try to break things down in bite sized pieces. What can happen in short or really long term, who is responsible for that?
So so the short term, one to three years, but the first year may not happen for another ten years or twenty years. Is that correct? I'm sure that, like, for instance. Which one, I think there was a short term about e-bikes, yeah. Probably private microtransit strategies, e-bikes, et cetera. Explore it. Well.
Well, the short term is to explore, you know, maybe it's, you do a study, make, that's to get vendors out there. So that's something that can be done fairly easily.
Yeah, it could be, but it doesn't mean, it doesn't mean it's gonna be done in three. It means, it means in, once you start, it'll take three years. That's my.
Like, it depends on. It depends on the recommendation.
Like, which one would be starting immediately?
I mean, a fairly simple zoning change could be done incredibly.
It could be, but doesn't mean it's gonna be.
Well, it's gonna be, it's gonna be if the mayor and council decides to do it.
Right.
These are just suggestions for, as Susan said, for employees.
I I I I didn't understand. I mean, I I tried, I. Her term means once you start it, it could be done quickly. It doesn't mean it's gonna be done quickly.
Correct, obviously, correct.
I'm to be sure to make that.
Ask a simple question. My name is Bruce Swidiger. I I spent thirty years in technical planning and planning obviously means something different to me than it does master plan. If the master plan doesn't drive the evolution of this town and the development of this town, what does?
Economics. Yeah, if you want a simple, if you ask a simple question, it's economics.
I'm a resident of this town. I would like to see where this town is headed. And how we're driving the council and the boards to follow some kind of plan. In a reasonable way. Well, I I love the plan. I thought you did a nice job. But I I'm very disappointed to hear that basically it's gonna go on the shelf until somebody comes in with an idea to do something. And then we'll see if it sits with the plan. I would like to see it drive what we do in this town and it's not doing that. It's what you're telling me. So if it doesn't, what does drive this town? You can say economics. So a developer comes in.
In most cases, in most cases, exactly right. Let me finish. You asked me a question. Let me get the whole answer out. The, in in most of the since we're dealing with zoning and restricting how people use land. Now forget, even zoning was a a big concept in the twenties. Because now we're telling people how they can use their land. Can they build a house? Can they build a gas wing station? We're now controlling it through zoning. And through zoning, as these things develop, the master plan looks at the town and makes adjustments. And makes certain goals, but it doesn't drive it. What drives it is that somebody's gonna come in and say, here's an opportunity. This lot is zoned a certain way and we're gonna come in and we're gonna use it. Hopefully within the master plan, because this opens up that piece of property. Give you an example. I hate to make the whole thing. When I was a young attorney, that was.
Give you an example, I hate to make the whole thing. When I was a young attorney, that was back in the Wilson administration. When I was a young attorney, you missed that. Um. I, I represented somebody who wanted to make reckless place a professional street. Most of the houses on that street were still big mansions. The people fought it. And it didn't happen. But through zoning, strangely enough, along comes a. It was actually a, um, a, a. It was a group home for, for um troubled girls. And that actually broke the street, because once that happened, everybody sold their house and said, let's make it professional. That's after they fought it. So economics does drive this, and the zoning allows this to happen. Reckless Place is not really a very good street to live on. It's a better street for professionals. And that's how these things develop. And the master plan, and looking at the master plan in the fifties, would have said. Gee, with a lot of traffic on reckless place, maybe that should be a professional zone rather than single family. That's how these things are driven.
So basically what you're telling me, somebody can come in and walk down the town. And it doesn't really have to follow the planning.
Yes, it does, absolutely.
Somebody else to get it approved, and it may not fit with the plan. Either the plan is, is going to be something legally they have to follow. But you're telling me it's not.
No, I'm not.
Well, I, I don't understand why, if it's, if it is, I don't understand why it takes up some priorities.
It's a guide. What, what is the law is the zoning ordinance. Let me, let me, let me address what you said. I'll, I'll come back to you. The zoning ordinance in this zone says you can do these things. If you wanna do something other than that, you have to come and ask permission. Mostly to the zoning board. And the zoning board, they decide whether or not they wanna let you. Have a more frungage or less frungage or go higher or use that isn't permitted there. Legally, if the zoning board decides to allow that to happen, it can happen, or they can deny the application. And that's a very simple, simplistic way of explaining it. There's lawyers and, and lawsuits and lots of. Minutia associated with that. But if the master plan says, we want this zone to be X. It gives the zoning board or the planning board some more leverage. If that person who has denied that application sues.
And also the zoning itself has to be consistent with the master plan.
But, but the law has. Is, is the planning, the master plan have more than just issues on zoning? As, as I read this, it's not just zoning issues in the master plan.
But it's part of the zoning.
I have to see red. It's not just zoning.
Yes, but you know, you mentioned thing, things that, that get done or not. The town owns a property in town. And in the property that the borough owns, it has an opportunity to do things, like I said, Sunset Park. But if you want more residential housing. On reckless place, which was a crime, as it was on Maple Avenue and all the streets it happened to. Then we've got to change the zoning to encourage single family use there. But that doesn't mean the town can do anything more than that. Because the people that own the property on reckless place have to decide to make those changes to their properties. The borough of Red Bank can't change those properties unless everybody wants us to. Use eminent domain, spend your tax dollars to make something happen. So aside from the property that the town owns, they could, they could decide tomorrow to do something with. We have to make opportunities happen or take advantage of them when they do.
But, but what the town owns is not insignificant. So looking at how the streets are upgraded, where sidewalks go. What the waterfront looks like, of the business, all of that is, is fair game. Master plan, so that's why it's all in there. It is primarily a lady's document, if you like.
And, you know, bicycles, we want better pedestrian and bicycle safety. And I love that. So tell me. Where we should take all the parking on one side of a street off. And add a bike lane, because I like that. Or. Let's talk to everybody who lives on the street you wanna make wider. And let's take ten feet from their front yard, because that we can do.
Okay, that's a good question. Who does that? It's the planning board does it?
The mayor and council makes those decisions to do it.
And there's a plan that, and they follow the master plan, a recommendation of master plan, that you should go to these streets.
The master plan doesn't get at that level, but the master plan says, we want better pedestrian safety. We want better bicycle safety.
So basically, it's, it's, there's something else that has to come back to.
There's another point to it. You're missing something else. The master plan, besides, I talked about the zoning control. Required by state law, they keep on saying you have to have an element in the plan. There has to be a circulation, traffic circulation element. It's got to have this kind of an element, and that things came along. Uh, over the years, and especially um affordable housing. Town for fourth that have these kind of elements, they're saying to the town. Planning board, you start off first by telling. The town in your master plan that you're taking care of these issues. And that's how they get incorporated into the master plan, these, besides the fact that White Street will be single pin dwelling. And it is more of an, but again, and this is just basic, basic civics. The laws are made by people who stand for election. This board doesn't stand for, well, a couple aren't going to, but. This board, we don't get elected, and it's the council who asks ordinances to implement. These kinds of things. And that's the way it works.
And this is a guideline of the things all the people who've supported this and gotten involved in the last year would like to see in Red Bank. And legally, that's all it really is. I wish it was a list of things. I completely and totally disagree with you, Bruce.
I, I understand, and I, I applaud you, because I thought it was a great document, but it's impressive. That you're telling me is really coming driving.
I'm not telling you that at all. Those are your words.
I, I, I have, I'm gonna read one of the, one of the things here regarding boost system. Recommendation, make energy efficiency a high priority. Particular solar energy systems by ensuring that zoning and building codes incorporate best practice. Cost low, timeframe ongoing. Is that gonna happen?
It is happening.
Where?
Yeah, when a new building comes up.
Ongoing.
Direct, we address that. That's one of the things that's addressed by the. By the engineer when we view a, a high rise or something like that. And what, what green steps they're taking, that, that's why we even give bonuses. The density on those kinds of issues. So yes, it is happening.
Good, and we're able to do it because it's in the master plan.
Yes.
Okay, what I'm saying is, all these ongoing things are things that. Virtually all of them are things that one agency or organization within the town, within the borough. Should be doing, are doing to a great extent. Yeah, multiple agencies. And if they're doing it. Um, if they're, if they're uh really paying attention to this and looking at it. That will. That will affect how the town evolves. I, I, I'm a little bit afraid that sometimes they don't do it. Like increased tree cover in commercial areas in an, in that. That didn't happen in White Street, and what was just the opposite. So, so there, there are all these ongoing things and, and. As, as far as priorities goes, a lot of these other things that are short term, et cetera, are. Maybe, you know, like you say, big things that go in, uh, with to do with, with this or that. But. Um. But the, if we could get the ongoing things really working. We could change, we could affect the way the town evolves. And, and I think, and I think that the, that maybe it's, it's, maybe. I, I was thinking, maybe the high priority things are things that we could do. That the town, that the town does, in fact, instead of just ignoring. Yeah, you know, if you make, if you make the things that are ongoing, that is a function of agencies and. And um departments in the town, then we should give them some highlight. Some, let, let them, let the agency know that this is something we want to have done. Because it hasn't happened.
As much as Councilman Ballard was wishing there was a door behind it, so that he could run away. And that's, I'm being facetious, but yes, this is a guide. For the, for the mayor and council and the employees of this town, for the people that run this town to look at. It is not an order. We don't run the town. This is not a command from the planning board to the mayor and council. They are suggestions. And as Mr. Lexstein said, our elected officials can decide. If they like some of these things, and if they do, there is teeth in their actions because it's in the master plan. But ultimately.
How do they decide that they like these things?
Well, if they, if they choose to direct uh the, the, the code enforcement. To get out there.
Vote on, are they gonna vote on this, right?
No, will you adopt this and it's.
We adopted the council.
No, and, and I can't imagine that they love that idea, but that's state law, and if they don't like it, they can talk to, to their elected officials and try.
So it's, it's up to our elected officials to have this plan available and to make sure. That the departments, at least for the things that they are dealing with, to deal with.
It's their choice to do that or not.
The plan is, isn't being implemented.
And, and, and some of it might not be, but it's their job to do that, not ours. It's their job to run the town. It's not our job to run the town. And, and I can't imagine anywhere in the state of New Jersey. That a mayor and council picked up a master plan and said, I love every single thing in here. I don't believe it ever happened.
Yeah, but I, I can't imagine they never picked it up and read it at all.
Oh, I disagree. Anyone else in the public?
I, I need to address. Because I know exactly where the exit is if I wanted to run. But, yeah, I, I've heard all this discussion and. Somebody mentioned how massive this master plan is. There are literally hundreds. Of suggestions of what the council should do. And to get them all done, to lose point, cost money. Limited resources that the council has to figure out how to disperse. Throughout the town to get things done. So to your point, yeah, there is some prioritizing going on. But it's constrained by the amount of taxes that the residents are willing to shoulder.
Thank you.
Period.
And so.
We could raise your taxes. Beyond your wildest dreams and say, but it's okay, we're doing the master plan, so there's no complaint. I doubt that would ever, ever happen. So things get done that we can get done within the constraints of how we raise money. And that's where grants come in, that's where uh private partner partnerships come in. All of these things have to happen for the council to do its job. So that, that's just my statement on it.
Amen. And, and you know, to, to, to echo that, i- if the town was handed twenty five million dollars tomorrow. Imagine what we could do. You could do Sunset Park, Broad to the River, you could do Riverwalk. But how many more streets could you make safe? How much affordable housing could you build? How much money could we spend to improve our schools? Oh, I don't know, that's like two hundred million I just mentioned. So how do we spend the twenty five million we just got? Well, that's up to everybody, the residents and the elected officials. But as, as Councilman Ballard said. You couldn't imagine what it would cost to do everything in this master plan. Where would we got the money? Whether it was from you, the residents, us, the residents, or the state, or from grants. It's as those opportunities present themselves and what the appetite is to spend and where to get the money from. And if they got that twenty five million, took dollars tomorrow, I bet there's fifty ideas. And I bet five hundred people would jam into this room to talk about the priorities for that twenty five million dollars. And what would it be? What are the most important things? It's impossible to think of what are the most important things. Until the opportunity presents itself and you get a million dollars for safe streets, we get a grant for that. Now let's talk specific about the best way to spend that money. But it's not gonna be here, it's gonna be with the people that run the town, with your input as, as, as residents. But the fact that it's in the plan helps when the time comes. But only if the time comes. And there are some things, Bruce, that we could make happen. And that the mayor and council and department heads can make happen along the way. And I'd like to think that they would. But ultimately, it's up to the people that run the town and the residents about what happens here. This is just an idea book. I'm done. I told my wife I'm not home by eight, there's a problem. And then at eight thirty. Does anyone from the public have any more comments or questions? Seeing now, I'm going to make a motion to close the public portion of this meeting. Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstained? All right, we have a couple of suggestions that came in from the public. There are a few of them. You all have a copy in front of you. I'd like to go over them. Or quit. We wanted to remove the um reference to a park. At the Red Bank Public Library, um, and call it Open Space. Because there is some conflict with the deed restriction from when that was donated to the town. Does anyone have a problem with making that language change on the board? Next, we want, there was a, a comment about lighting, any lighting being provided anywhere to be wildlife friendly. And I'd like to add, when possible. Does anyone have a problem with that? I had the same note. Okay. Number three, we want to add language to make clear that existing public housing units would be maintained. And as Susan mentioned, that's part of the law as well. We don't wanna build it and forget about it. Does anyone have a problem with that language? So, number four. Uh, we want to encourage underground parking structures where feasible, as I said, dig a hole and put all the parking you need in. So the, we wanna say both, we wanna state that both underground and under building. Uh, parking, when we talk about that. Anyone have a problem with that?
No problem.
Opportunity zone, add opportunities on to figure one on page twenty two. Susan, you have any color on that? I don't have that in front of me.
It's small.
So are we saying we wanna call it an opportunity zone?
It, it's definitely designated help. So it exists, it would just be.
So we just wanna add it to the map? Okay, and that's effectively. Anyone have a problem with that?
No.
Last. Land use plan recommend, um, for both maps on page fifteen fifty one, remove. Remove the zone from the legend.
So, the, it's the overall house overlay zone, which has been built out, it exists. The recommendation, the, the already is in the draft, it's bring that zone into traditional zoning. Maybe the R T district or another district that we accommodate, what's ready to build. But the maps were not very clear. So they, they were still showing that. Their maps, so this is just basically cleaned up, it made very clear that the recommendation is that that just be brought in traditional zoning. And it, it doesn't change what actually exists from ground, it's just painted out.
So talking, talking about changing zoning, because we can't do that with this, it's really just clarifying the map. Anyone have a problem with that?
No, but I, I, I do have one question. I just wanna go back on something real quick, it won't, won't take long to get you.
I have to get on that, that's my thirtieth wedding anniversary.
Opportunity zoning, we're not talking about the trade overlay, right? That's totally different. The trade, right, kinda simulates that area, that's why I ask.
I mean, the federal opportunity zone is. Around the country, it carries a lot of taxes, that's just. Uh, so it's meant to revitalize some. Already, it's been designated, and it just wasn't showing in there.
Okay, fine, thank you.
Um, one more change, I just wanted to add, I'm sorry. Um, I just got this in this afternoon, actually, well, we were having this meeting. To change um shade tree commission to committee.
You can change that every time.
Want you to not commit it?
I have a resolution.
Um, last chance for the board and comments or questions.
Um, I just, I just wanna say thank you to Susan. And to F H I and B F J, they've done an amazing job. Um, and with the tireless amount of, you know, panic calls and. The random emails, um, just reaching out to everyone and being so attentive to all the residents. Um, I mean, I've seen the pictures and everything and just. I just wanna congratulate you guys on such a great job, and thank you so much for the work that you've done, um. I know I appreciate it, because I am going to send this entire document to the state. Um, as part of our center designation, um, because so much of what's in it matches what they require from us. So I just wanna say. So I just want to say thank you and you guys did a wonderful job. Thank you.
Love working with you. Great, great committee, great staff.
But we had all of that. Susan, you, you and your team were amazing and, and Sean, as I said last time, we couldn't have done this without you. This has been a tireless effort on your part and Chris Hands to make this happen, and we very much appreciate that.
I, I do have one question. I apologize if, if this question was asked at a previous session or, or one of the many public sessions you had, but there's a reference in the master plan to the BR one zone and allowing taller buildings in that zone and particularly in that zone on Monmouth Street and West Front Street. Now, I remember a couple of years back, there was a major project at the Pazzo Rastavon for a building that exceeded the height limitations. Uh, and, and now this reference here seems to be, and, and run around the zoning board who denied those applications in the past as being too tall. So my, I guess my question is, is this a spot zoning built into the master plan specifically for those types of projects on that street?
No, not at all. It's, it's not spot zoning because it's recommending for fairly broad areas to specific corridors, but that's where you should probably think about building super high intensity. So any more denied because of the time, it's not zoning. It still will be allowed if the master plan is adopted, you have to change the zoning to that. But the zoning would follow this master plan, the seeds which we planted. So the idea is that you're, you're seeing pressure for smaller buildings to competitive route downtown Red Bank. The idea is to follow that more properly, I mean, to make a better connection with or a station, which is very happy. So yes, it is, it would be a change, and that's why it needs to be managed. That's the very definition of guest spots, right? If, if you do zoning that's not in the master plan, this is like one piece plan. That's spots, right? Put it in the master plan, you know, the recommendation, the zoning follows that, sounds fine.
Susan, can you tell me where that is? Because the way that Councilman Ballard worded it made me realize that I must have missed it. So now I want to know where that says, because I sure as hell, Michael's low groaning over here. I sure as hell don't want anything taller than is currently permitted. I'm speaking for me.
And you're speaking for me as well.
Well, I'm happy to, because I, I, if, if that's what it says, I'm trying to search it on my iPad and I can't get it, so.
What is?
The BR zone?
BR one.
BR one.
If that's, if that's what it says.
Clinton, it doesn't exactly give a height that you can see, no one thirty three.
Page ninety seven.
It doesn't add one thirty three.
What does it say exactly for, for the height for the?
You can read it exactly.
The borough should look at revisions to the BR one zoning district to allow for potentially taller buildings along these streets with corresponding adjustments to bulk and density provisions to focus more intensive development on the two corridors. Portions of Monmouth and West Front Streets already in the train station overlay zone, which allows for building height of fifty feet, intensity thirty five meters to the acre. This level of development intensity could be considered along the rest of the street, west of thirty five. The remaining areas of the BR one district outside the train station overlay, retaining their existing area and all standards.
So that's not suggesting going taller than fifty feet, right?
Didn't, no, it didn't get specific to that.
Do you, would, would you?
There that we.
Put, put, put your, put your hat on. I hired you to convince the plan, the zoning board, to let me build a seventy five foot building in that zone. Does that language help me do that?
Not much.
Because if it does, we're carrying this thing, that's not gonna happen.
That's.
Change that, yeah, but it's making ordinance to the height restriction? Yes, but if it's in this plan that we want it, want something, it's harder for them to do and easier for someone to fix.
Right, because it, because it doesn't, it's gonna get specific type.
Fifty, I love fifty feet, but the zone is fifty feet, and I'm not implying we make it shorter like, like that, but um if you're telling me this makes it easier for me to build a seventy five foot building there, then I'm not happy about that.
I, I have to disagree again. I, I know I'm in the minority here. And but what's happened in, in Red Bank is because of the height restrictions, people hover the whole lot. And I think, I was thinking, there could be some kind of policy where if you if you have more buffer space, more setback, more buffer, more open space, you could go a little higher. Uh, you know, it's a trade off between, a- and that's my, my view, so.
That can happen.
The planning board isn't unanimous, even though you said that.
Well, like I said, I always say I'm speaking for myself, and it wouldn't come here anyway.
And I'm speaking for myself.
It's gonna go to the zoning board anyway.
Yeah.
And that could happen. Someone could come in with a plan and say, we want to set this back an extra fifteen feet and plant some trees. Will you let us put two more stories on it?
Yeah, that's.
That could happen. And it's up to then all the people that are noticed.
I, I, I think.
Out and get, and, but it could happen now.
I think if you walk by Station Place and you look at that, walking by it, you'd say, this is horrendous. If they had that option, maybe they would have raised it two stories and wouldn't be, wouldn't look so bad. It'd be some kind of plaza or something in front.
And then everybody would have an opportunity to weigh in on what they thought about that.
Yeah.
An example is the Pazzo building.
Yeah.
Is fifteen feet further back from the road than the Mazda dealership was.
Mm-hmm.
Which allowed that, as hard as that is to believe, is fifteen feet further back than the Mazda dealership was, which helped create that plaza-like feel. I don't mean the corner, which is even further back. But Pazzo's got that giant space, which now they've enclosed part of, but only on one floor.
Which we didn't do, by the way, at the planning board.
But, you know, so yes, it can happen. They didn't get a density bonus for it, but that's how much better that looks to your point. If you can push it back, the, the wall brings. Is, it's another one. It's fifteen feet further back than Rassusponiac was. And I still don't like it, but at least it's fifteen feet further back from the road than the, the car dealership was.
Yeah.
Also, so what this would do basically is, you know, it's saying, if not the way I read it, and I wouldn't, I wouldn't think you'd get this out of this. Um, not seventy five feet. So it's saying you already allow fifty feet in train station overlay, which covers a good chunk of the BR one. So for the area that's not in that train station overlay along Monmouth Street, it costs. This is saying you could conceivably go up to fifty, the same level of height or same density that you're already allowing in the train station overlay. It also says later in the paragraph about setbacks. It's also recommended that the required farther setback on Monmouth, West Front Street is the fifteen feet by sufficient room for a sidewalk advancement. Currently, the requirement is ten feet along the street and twenty five feet elsewhere.
Look at that, that should be.
And I just want to add that the BR one, it goes up to forty feet. So she's, um, the recommendation is just to increase the entire zone to an extra ten feet, which is makes it to fifty. That's the recommendation.
But, but along.
Along Monmouth, yeah, along Monmouth, certainly.
We've talked for a very long time about that connection between downtown and the train station. And that's, that's where that idea came from, but that won't happen unless the council decides to change the ordinance.
Uh-huh.
And it, it was because of that connect, we wanted, we very much have been talking for twenty five years about connecting downtown to the train station. So it's just those areas.
Just those two corridors.
And Sean, you're saying the BR one is forty feet now?
Forty feet, other uses, so there's two standards. I'm sorry, let me pull, oh, open. So detached single family is thirty five feet, not to exceed um two and a half stories and other uses thirty feet.
Anybody else have any questions?
Just briefly, Sean, I was received on an email from a Demi family regarding the traffic circle, which would in essence require that to be implemented, a taking of some other land to implement that. I know that the recommendation though is that we do not do the traffic circle stated here. They were wondering, and I, I don't think it's the worst thing, that stakeholders residents oppose the implementation of that. Is there a way for us to kind of note that that testimony took place, that they, that they support, that they support their findings, that that is not the appropriate use or the appropriate alteration to that traffic situation?
I think that last paragraph, um
I think it's.
For that section kind of sums up what the recommend, overall recommendation is. Which states that it's the, my computer's acting up, but the last paragraph above that, um
says the solution, the solution that provides the greatest benefit in these costs, it should be something that bottomed place. Yeah. So I think um what, what sounds like what you're asking for, David, is um to be clear that.
That the stakeholders that would be impacted, yeah.
Uh, you know, we're still.
Correct, specifically by stakeholders, because there would be a taking plant in order for us to do that. I think that that would be appropriate for us to reflect, because it is saying the best is the traffic light. It's not saying the others should be taken off the table. So somewhere should be reflected that a resident who would be deeply impacted by that did register a specific objection to that particular, because it would require a taking.
Okay, I, I don't see an issue adding that language. There, there's already language in that page that talks about sort of the drawbacks of some of this recommendation, some of these um possibilities. This could just be added, that it's another thing to think about with the roundabout, is that stakeholders came out. To not support it.
I think it's appropriate just because of that impact that they would have to lose property. So I, I think it's a good addition if the, if the, if the rest of the board agrees.
Lyndon, Lyndon, what would be the uh, how would you alter that? How would you, how would you print that then? What he's talking about, what they're writing about.
Susan.
Susan, I'm sorry.
Just looking one.
I, which this is on page eighty six of the plan. And I would say, say that. I'm saying words involving this process specifically affected to the context of currently.
Isn't that the kind of thing you put in the master plan, or is it just part of the record because we discussed it here and, and, and it's in the minutes?
Fair question.
I mean, I.
Would, would we, would we put language in specifically commenting that, that residents were against something that we've?
No.
I mean, the fact that it's in the minutes, part of the record that we discussed it here, I, I think is fine. I think if we get into that, then there's a hundred things that.
I defer to Mr. Lexte, and the only reason I elevated it is because it would require specifically the taking of residential land, um, which then is, it's a bigger issue than somebody making just a complaint. We're talking about now a, a, a taking.
Yeah.
Uh, that's why, that's specifically why I'm raising this one and why it might get treated differently than some of the other notes that we've gotten because of that one issue.
Doesn't the borough have a uh?
Amendment domain.
Amendment, don't know.
Yeah, that's right.
It can't have.
It got passed in mayor medicine.
Yeah, we got it, we got a law that you can.
Can't do it anyway. I mean, it would have to be uh you know, you couldn't, unless somebody gave it a problem, really.
Right, do we need, number five, been there and all?
Yeah.
We just, we're slipping down the hill.
We're falling down a hill. So um was there a motion to approve?
That's my plan. So to finish up my, my question. Um, I, I propose that the language be clearer uh about the change in the BR one zone to limit it up to fifty feet, if that's the pleasure of the council, because this will be a conversation to be had at the council level. Well, I, 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 I think, I think at the council level, you can do that. You can change the zone. You can, no, I, I understand, but I want the master plan, which I, as everybody is saying, is the Bible that we have to follow and people can sue us if we're not following it. But if we're unclear on what's in that plan, does somebody challenge it to say, well, you want taller buildings, it's the taller building?
What's the tip, I mean, it's like David saying what you're saying, why don't we do that next, you know, we're gonna do the whole thing.
But because that's specific.
Councilman has a good point, and I think the language would be made more clear on page ninety seven, that it's up to building height of fifty feet and density of thirty five meters to the acre, no more. Make that a lot of it clear, that that's really the parameters that we're talking about, one of those two.
This is just a clarification. It was never meant to be more than fifty. So you're making, right, you're not changing substance, you're changing just the line.
So you, you'll make that change in the document and we'll reference it in the resolution?
No, we're, we're passing it now. Like, the changes are, we've already done a few changes.
So give me, give me some change there, so we have it on the record, because I agree with Councilman Ballard, fifty feet is, is, is my tolerance.
And, and I'm basing that on our discussion where you told me that Pazzo is fifty feet right now. I don't want my tape, taking your word for it.
And I don't want it to be taller.
So I'm reading the part, it says portions of Monmouth and West Front Streets are already in the train station overlay, which allows a building height of fifty feet and density of twenty five meters to the acre. Change to be up to this level of development intensity, but no more could be considered along the rest of the two corridors west.
Up to fifty, but no more.
Yeah.
All right, is everybody happy with?
When you say corridors, do you mean those corridors that are not in the train station overlay now? Okay, on only those two streets in the BR one zone that are not already in the train station overlay?
Yes.
Up to, but not more than fifty feet? And the density of how many units per acre?
Thirty five.
Okay.
Okay. No matter moves, the doctrine of the master plan has amended. What move?
Isomo. Barbara is um.
Second.
And you two are second, Sean?
All right. All right.
Yeah, so as long as it stays at fifty feet.
Sam and Kuzo?
Yes.
Michael Ballard?
Yes.
Mike Murphy?
Yes.
Juanita Lewis?
Yes.
Yes. Lou Dementa?
Yes.
Christina Bonatakis?
Yes.
Barbara Bos.
Yes.
David Cassidy?
Yes.
And Frederick Stone.
Yes. A thank you again to everyone on the board and a, a huge thank you to all the residents, especially everyone who showed up. You get ten extra points just for coming. Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you.
Hey.
I know, we have to, our next, do we have our next, we're gonna do a special meeting?
Uh.
We don't know that yet.
Not yet.
Okay. Make, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, everyone. Thank you. That's the first you heard of it?
It's, I feel better.